I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Paintsville City Council Monday, November 9th, 2015. From the special call of Roe v.
Bill Mike.
Here.
Tommy.
Here.
David.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
And Sean.
Here.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting of 10:12, 2015, or the special call meeting at 10:22, 2015?
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
The motion is second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions or comments concerning the departmental report?
I'll make the motion, will you approve those departmental reports?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We also have a motion to pay the bills, if funds are available.
So.
I have one question, Mr. Bill McCall.
Okay, I just wanted to.
I was thinking.
I looked like you were gonna ask him.
Well, it's not bad, I just want to ask that. But, these accounts payable, I know we're getting the agents, but we're not getting, I'm not seeing the actual, the check, showing what we're actually paying. It's not in the package, I know that Kim will give it to me if I want it, but I just wondered if you could.
I've got an extra copy if you'd like.
I just wanted to make sure, because I'm approving pay bills, but I haven't seen bills repaid, you know what I mean? So that's why I want, that's why I want clarity.
Okay, well, from here forward, we'll put that in there.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve pay bills.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, got several announcements. Uh, I want to mention, uh, I don't have the rundown of what's coming up at the SIP Theater, but I will say that every weekend and several of the weekdays are, uh, will be active through the month of November and December. So be sure and keep a check on what's going on there, and if you don't have anything to do, uh, we've got such a great crowd tonight, I get to, I get to announce a few things here to y'all. But, uh, please, please check on the SIP Theater, take advantage, I know, uh, Johnson Central Drama Club, I think, has a, has an event. And, uh, there's plays going on, and there's, and there's music and entertainment, so, uh, so take, take advantage of that if you can. I also want to mention, uh, Main, Paintsville Main Street had two or three things. Uh, one, the Pumpkin House, uh, unbelievable designs and work by some of the, a lot of the kids in the schools. And the pairing pumpkins that were located at the Stafford House. Uh, thank all those kids that did a wonderful job, and thank Main Street for putting that together. Now, on the fourteenth of, uh, November, there will be a Santa's Workshop at the Stafford House. And I'd like to see Jack Palfrey out to that, uh, if you can make it. And, uh, oh, bring you, bring all the kids out to that, they'll have a good time. Also, on December the fifth, will be the downtown holiday celebration and Christmas parade. Uh, I think the, uh, celebration will be going on all day with the merchants and, and prizes and things of that nature. And then the Christmas parade is around five o'clock, is that right? Christmas parade at five o'clock, and the lighting of the tree. Uh, call Main Street, uh, at City Hall there from there if you need it on those things. I also want to thank those who contributed and participated in the Veterans' Ninth, Reve- Ninth Annual Veterans Referral Center Telethon. Uh, we had a good time, a lot of people, and, and raised some money for the Veterans Referral Center there a few days ago. Uh, and I also want to invite everyone to the Veterans Day program at the, at the fiscal courtroom at eleven AM on Wednesday, which is Veterans Day. So, uh, that's always a, always a very nice event, but, uh, generally, I think, the Johnson Central Choir performs, and, and, uh, it's, it's a very moving, uplifting event. Uh, I want to declare the month of November as Chris Stapleton Month. I think everyone knows what Chris has done, and I'm gonna sign a proclamation doing so. Uh, we're proud of him, he's done a wonderful job, but a lot of years of hard work. Uh, I want to challenge every man and the women that can to grow a beard during the month of November. Oh, y'all, oh, y'all aware of Chris, Chris's appearance and, and the beard that, uh, that he has, and we'd love to see, we'd love to see everybody in town, uh, sporting a pretty nice beard during the month of November, and that's also, uh, shows awareness for prostate, prostate cancer during the month of November. That's how I got started out on this, and I'm doing it. Also, I'm just gonna say that's Chris Stapleton beard. I want to announce that, uh, the Christian Appalachian Project has finalized their plans to move their location from up on three twenty-one across from American Standard to, uh, the end of Ponderosa Drive in Paintsville. Uh, the, uh, the work is getting ready to start on the, on the highway there, taking off the cliff where the rocks always fall. And we've always been concerned about for so long, if the school buses particularly and so forth. And that work will start soon, and Christian Appalachians should be moved into Paintsville by the end of, about, uh, the April, somewhere around April. Some of the people are gonna move in January, I think, and some of them are gonna move in April. The, the state, the state has bought that building from them, and they'll use that whole hollow there as a fill. Uh, all that'll be torn down and come out of there. And, uh, as they, as they take those cliffs off and change that road, uh, they would fill that hollow with the overburden. Okay, that's all I got on that. First order of business, second reading of the ordinance, annex and territory being generally bounded by and the general vicinity of US twenty-three in the area of Jennings Creek.
Speak up, Mr. Bill McCall.
You want?
Can you speak up a little?
I'll try, I'm sorry.
We all made your vote, man.
It's bad acoustic, I, I'll do my best.
The ordinance annex and territory being generally bounded by and the general vicinity of US twenty-three in the area of Jennings Creek. Whereas the territory annex consisting of approximately three hundred and thirty-two point oh seven nine acres of land that were left, and the general vicinity of being generally bounded by US twenty-three in the area of Jennings Creek, which territory is identified on the attached map marked Exhibit A, and more particularly described below, is contiguous to the city of Paintsville, Kentucky, and a urban carrier suitable for urban development without unreasonable delay. And whereas on June eighth, two thousand and fifteen, the city of Paintsville City Council enacted ordinance two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero five, declared the desirability of the city of Paintsville's intent to annex below the described territory pursuant to KRS eight one eight point four two oh. And whereas the city of Paintsville pursuant to KRS eight one eight point four two oh, waited more than sixty days from the enactment of ordinance two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero five, and received no valid petition, placed the question of annexation upon a ballot. Whereas the city of Paintsville has otherwise, has not otherwise, been challenged in court of law, proceeding with annexation of the below described property. Now therefore, being retained by the city of Paintsville, Kentucky as follows. One, the territory described below, map of which is attached according to Exhibit A, from the school equal parade disorder that hereby annexed in the city of Paintsville, Kentucky. Track one, the legal description, the survey description, track one. And then the survey description of track two is provided. Has an area of eight point three eight nine acres, we have one of those, I guess. Track one, three two, three point six nine. Section two, the provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable. And if any section predates the provision, shall for any reason be declared invalid. Such declaration of invalidity shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Three, all prior municipal ordinances or ordinances or parts of any municipal order, ordinance in conflict therewith are hereby appealed. Four, this ordinance shall become effective upon passage approval publication as required by law. Section five sets forth the date of the second reading and publication, first and being.
Okay, you've heard the, uh, second reading of, uh, the ordinance of the property near the intersection of, uh, four sixty and twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? Now, could we, uh, we'll need a roll call vote.
I think that we need to make it clear to everybody that this isn't the annexation that they're all here for. This is the one we've already passed, and.
Yeah, I think, I think they know that, they've been, they've been moving around most.
Can I ask a question, can you annex a piece of property when there's no residence?
No, ma'am. I couldn't understand, I didn't hear.
I think you can annex a piece of property when there's no residential residence, law and policy.
Uh, could we have a motion to approve that second reading?
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Uh, now we need a roll call vote.
Bill Mike.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Jim.
No.
Sarah.
No.
Sean.
Yeah.
Uh, motion passes, annexation is completed. Uh, next item on the agenda is a permission to bid and obtain quotes for CMRS nine eleven grant. Gary? You come to the microphone and tell us what's going on.
Mayor Council says in relation to a grant application that we're getting ready to apply for. Okay, the CMRS boards actually awarded us money, uh, requiring us to just get permission from council to go to bid or to get quotes. So it's just permission from you all giving us the authority to go to bid for this particular grant application.
So you need a, uh, resolution?
Yes.
Permitting the bidding and the term of quotes for the, uh, CMRS nine eleven grant. Any questions or comments? Adam?
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve that.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, also, the another number three is a resolution concerning the homeland security procurement process. What do we need there, Gary?
Yes, sir, uh, I think that's probably a resolution in your package. Uh, we had actually done a resolution when we applied for the grant. We have received a grant in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars for a sirens project in the city of Paintsville. This is an additional resolution, and this is in reference to the procurement process. If you look at the last paragraph, it says, you know, it mentions the quotes. If the project is under twenty thousand dollars, you get free quotes. If the project is over forty thousand, then it has to go to bid. So I need permission.
Could you, could you, I don't know if everyone really knows, I don't know that we've ever talked much about the, uh, purpose of this grant. Is to, uh, put sirens?
Yes.
Are you sirens?
Yeah. A, uh, warning sire, everybody's aware of all the sirens we have, obviously, all operated for years. Uh, and it was what, however, attempting to do, and there's good thing just, you know, one project at a time, it's hard to get a complete sirens project, but, you know, the problem, the bonus in, in others. But we have approved it, it's personal, so all probability this sirens will be located downtown. But we will continue to go back for additional projects, uh, actually, we would like to have a sirens located in the plaza area and also in the kitchen. But basically, we're taking it full time at a time. And we, we've tried to pick projects forward, and it is, it's gonna go. So we need a, need a resolution. You want to motion to approve the resolution for us, for Homeland Security? I'll make it motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Gary. Uh, we have a request from Paintsville Utilities to pursue the purchase of a dump truck from Ford, Ground Ford, thirty-eight thousand five nineteen ninety, and a dump bed in the amount of nine thousand five ninety-five from Owens Incorporated. Any discussion on that?
Then you can make a motion, make a motion, will you, loud?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, number five is update on Carter Lane. Uh, Virginia, could you come forward and tell us what's going on there?
As you know, we, uh, can't see anywhere here.
It's turned off.
Take it off, you're standing there too.
This is good, this is good. Okay. All right, as you all know, this is an update on Carter Lane, which is our mitigation project that we have going on with the residents over there that have been impacted by the slide. Um, we applied for hazard mitigation grant program, and we were awarded that, we were awarded to do the full app, which means they're gonna give us the money as soon as we go through the process. We also applied to, for a PDM, which y'all may remember. That one was the one that clears a little quicker, but it has larger match. We learned a couple weeks ago that we were not awarded PDM. So that means we're back to the hazard mitigation, um, grant program project that we spent. Um, that project has the thirteen percent match, if you may remember, and it does have a longer timeline. But there's some good news in this, and firstly, in that the fact that we did the PDM application, it required so much more work and so many more steps. Then our full application is already complete for our hazard mitigation project. And this is something that the mayor and I talk about almost every day. And he has been talking with the exec, the director of the hazard mitigation program, which is Jeanne Jo Roner. And he's letting, let her know that this is a very serious situation, and we don't, we don't wanna spend any extra time. And just to give you, I brought the timeline, just to give you what a normal hazard mitigation timeline is. Would be that we would not submit this full application until March. Okay, that means that, and we would do our work, which we've already finished, so our application is ready to go. They would, they would actually take it into March. And then in April, they would do their review on it. And then in May, it would be submitted to FEMA Region Four, which is in Atlanta. And they have nine to twelve months to review it. And that would put us at the very end of twenty sixteen, or very early seventeen, in a very best case scenario. But because the mayor and our office and a lot of other people have been working diligently with them to let them know how serious it is, they've reached out to us to let us know that they're doing their very best to go ahead and have our applications submitted by the end of the month. Since we've already been through the whole thing, we're way ahead of everybody else in that disaster, because we did a PDM, which we've already been, we've got the environmental stuff is already going on. We have a completed budget, we have everything that you need to go forward. So, uh, we're, mayor's working really closely with the hazard mitigation folks, and he lets, he's letting them know how important this is, that we get to go quicker. So what we're hoping is that they will accept this application at the end of the month, and that it would quickly get to Atlanta, and that they will, at their Atlanta Region Four, to review it quicker. And if that can happen, then we can move quicker on the project. If that's, that's what's going on right now.
Do we think there's any chance, I probably shouldn't ask this, but I've done one. Any chance that we can get into the first phase of this project before, uh, the middle of winter?
Uh, you know, anything can happen. But I mean, I, I would think that we'd still probably, I mean, I, it's probably still gonna be through there for, if they started reviewing it December, that's the holiday, but a lot of people are out of the office. If they started reviewing it in December, it would still probably take, you know, two, three, four months for them to complete their review, I mean, they would.
So really, this, we're, we're looking at at least spring.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think if, if you were to be able to enter into contract in spring, that would be perfect. I mean, it would be a perfect, a perfect scenario that everything worked out. So, I mean, that would be a very good thing to happen by that point in time. I can't see it happening this year, but stranger things have happened. It could get moved even quicker.
Any, uh, any questions from any of the residents up there on that? I saw some of them here. Dale, did, did you hear all that?
I talked to them individually as well, and I wanted to let all the council know that, you know, everybody's doing everything that they can. We've had very good congressional support, a lot of letters have been written, you know, everybody's been on board trying to do. And the, the Jeanne Jo Roner, who's the director of the hazard mitigation program, she has done everything she could to be as comfortable with us, and she definitely realizes how important this is. So I feel like, you know, we're, we're as good a position as we can be with the project.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item is, uh, has to do with the proposed annexation of the Hager Hill area. Uh, I need to, I need to make a, make a statement, uh, before we move into that. I'd like to start by saying that Paintsville is a great small city. Since, since the city beginning, its theaters have always tried to move the city forward while attempting to create the best possible blend of new services, low tax rates, and growth. This has been at times difficult, as everyone doesn't agree with the cost of new services. Many take the attitude that it doesn't, it doesn't benefit me personally, then we don't need it, and I don't want to help pay for it. To be a great city, however, I believe that the city should provide all sorts of services for the city. Fire, police, for the citizens, fire, police, emergency management, utilities, recreation, cultural opportunities, trash collection, street maintenance, historical preservation, and much more for those citizens. Many of these services are utilized by not only Paintsville residents, but also the, uh, uh, citizens of Johnson County who don't live in Paintsville. There are no surcharges when county residents use Paintsville Recreation facilities, or the ambulance service, or the country music museum, or any other service, nor will there be. After all, Paintsville is in Johnson County, and for Johnson County to be a great county, which it is, then Paintsville must be a great city. I'd also like to point out that the elected officials of Johnson County are elected to serve all the residents of the county, and the residents of Paintsville are part of that group. I, for one, find it troubling that elected county officials would pit the residents, residents against one another while making inflammatory comments about the city in an effort to appease those who are most vocal opposing annexation. If some county residents are annexed into the city, they are still county residents, as we all are. As to the matter of annexation, this process has taken place many times in our city. Commercial growth takes place just outside of the city limits in order to take advantage of the city's population base, as well as the city's services, without being taxed. If there are no benefits, if there was no benefit in being near the city, then the business owners would place their businesses in remotely areas within the county where land is cheaper and plentiful, and there is less likelihood of annexation. As those areas adjacent to the city fill with business, then annexation occurs. Without annexation to bring developing areas into the city, our city would likely be four or five blocks in the downtown area, and the growth we, the growth we have seen over the years would never have occurred. And the services provided by the city would be nonexistent. I hear many times from the same people who are opposed to annexation, that we should, we should be more like Pikeville. I guarantee them, I mean, if their business was in Pike County, annexation would have occurred a long time ago, and their tax rate would be considerably higher. I certainly do understand that nobody in business or personally wants to raise their costs. However, at present, they're using the services of this city every day. How much will it cost a business or an individual if annexation occurs? I don't know, this will vary with each individual's situation. If I can assist a business or an individual in calculating your costs, and in some cases benefit, uh, what that might be, I would be happy to. I'm aware of many erroneous and outlandish claims that have been made by a few individuals who would be affected by the annexation. And I would hope that each person investigates for himself themselves. I'd also like to ask that each councilperson support, support growth of our city through future annexation. As any city of us grow or become stagnant and eventually die. Each of you was elected to do what is best for the city of Paintsville, and you should fulfill that duty. With all of that being said, uh, I believe this, uh, annexation needs further study. And I would, uh, I would suggest that, uh, we table the issue at this time. And I would, I would suggest that we table the issue at this time and, uh, for further consideration at a later date, then I'd like to ask council for a motion to do so.
Before you do that, uh, these people, some of them have, they have it on work today. They're taking on work, some of them stop Navy Centers. Uh, we have already publicized this and they are here, and I don't think they need that much.
Let me say this.
I knew you heard on this.
I'm sure you do.
We've got a, we've got it on the agenda, we've got a forum. Why are we taking, what's, what's the reason?
There's already a motion on the floor and, uh.
No, there wasn't.
Yes, there was. Can somebody make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion, we table it.
I didn't hear a motion before.
Excuse me, I, I, I stand corrected. I, you know, at, at some degree, I think the folks are.
Why are we taking?
I think the folks are getting what they want, uh, and, uh, we, um.
Yeah, they're not getting what they want because they're not telling us why you're taking.
Better hit your gavel.
Let me, let me say. Let me say this for two of our councilpeople. I would suggest that y'all run for county commission because you have no business on city council. I have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A motion for more?
To table this item.
When, when did you decide to do this, on your secret meetings?
I'd like, sir, I'd like to ask you, I'd like to ask you. That's, when we get, when we get finished with this, we'll let you speak. Hang on. Is there a motion, is there a motion on the floor, is there a second? Come on, y'all. I mean, you can't get what you want with freedom of. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but you're not in, you're not in control of this meeting and, uh, city council, uh, city council will make their own decision.
You can come down to county and try to grab her. We don't want to be part of the city limit.
You want somebody to come into your living room and change the channels on your TV?
Absolutely.
When you want somebody pulling your fire side, your fire block. This ain't Walmart, you can't walk around and take your juice once you walk. We're not gonna have that.
So are, are, are we allowed to go ahead and?
You don't wanna vote, then you don't vote. Let me ask you this, if we table this, what do we do?
There's gonna be a, I'm, I'm asking. In order to have a second reading of an intended for which you have to give the person that the statute requires notice, gotta give them notice, just like you did this time. If you're saying, if there's a motion and you table it, you're not gonna vote on it, you don't vote on it.
Are you gonna send us another notice?
In order to have the second reading, there will have to be notice just like the last time.
You should have done that a minute ago.
Hell, I tried to.
The reason we're not, the reason we're not gonna do much discussion on this thing and the, and the, is because, uh, we're not gonna listen to a bunch of people yelling and screaming.
If we didn't start yelling and screaming, then we shut this down. We have a speaker we might probably burn.
Yeah, we have Tim actually.
Is, plus the pleasure of council on, uh, taking, uh, taking the vote or voting on the, uh, is there a second?
I made a motion, I, I made a motion, we, that we table it.
But I wanna know, when we table it, what we're gonna do? Are we gonna amend it, are we gonna do something different?
We may never do anything.
It may just be dropped.
If, if after further study, we, we feel like there's a need for it to come back up, we would give you notice. Otherwise, it wouldn't come back up, okay?
The last night you were giving us nothing, notice the last day? Everybody showed up that day, but that's why you.
No, ma'am, uh, the, uh, notice is required. I, you can't, you can't answer one person, because everybody else.
Well, one thing we let our two people speak. Please speak, let us know.
The notice is required to be, uh, at least fourteen days prior to the meeting. By law. Does that get published?
No.
No, it's, it's, uh, notice by mail to all the property owners or residents. We have a motion and a second to table, uh, any further discussion? If not, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 No.
Opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Bill May?
Yes, table it.
Tommy?
No.
David?
Yes.
We know what mine is, it's no.
Jim?
No.
Sarah? Sean?
We have a three-three tie, I will vote yes, break that tie. Motion is tabled. Do we have, uh, anything further to discuss? If not, uh, there is, oh, we have. Can you come, Mike, Inspector, please?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
First of all, um, let me say that, um, thank you for giving me an opportunity to address the city council. Um, I've been asked by the residents and business owners to voice our collective opposition and concerns regarding the proposed annexation of the Hager Hill area in the city of Paintsville. Let it be known that these words are not settling my own, but rather the collective thoughts and concerns that the residents and business owners have voiced during this process. First, we want to let it be known that we are not opposed to the growth of Paintsville. Many of us have been strong advocates for tourism and economic growth of our area, and many of us have strongly supported the city school system as well as businesses in this area. Our vocal opposition is not a personal reflection of city council or any of its members. We're proud residents of Johnson County and we're concerned with the welfare of our residents or businesses in these difficult economic times. We, as an overwhelming majority of the residents and business owners of Hager Hill, strongly oppose the proposed annexation for the following reasons. We do not believe that the residents nor the business owners will benefit from the annexation. We're already adequately served by the city water and EMS services. We are adequately served by the Westmanly Fire Department, and we strongly oppose the additional taxation that will occur without added benefit to the residents. We see living in the city limit as a choice, and it's one that we did not make. Many of the homeowners have validated that the cost of their insurance would greatly increase, and the businesses have also validated that their insurance costs would rise as well. The employees of these businesses would also bear an increased tax burden, which would negatively impact the families of those employees in these type of economic times. We have businesses in that area that have vowed to relocate and leave our area if this annexation passes. We strongly oppose Hager Hill being annexed as a business district, which limits our autonomy over our own property and homes. Work to be done on our homes and in our areas such as additions may be denied due to being deemed a business district. And skipping over some prominent neighborhoods in the area, you've chosen to tax some of those who may be struggling just to survive. We acknowledge that one business within the proposed area would like to sell alcohol, and I can tell you that living close to this high-traffic area is dangerous enough for a neighborhood with small children, let alone adding alcohol to the mix. We are concerned with the detriment that this annexation will have to the Westmanly Fire Department in funding and servicing our area for which they have served and protected us for many years. We support this volunteer fire department and do not wish to lose them as a provider of service. We're concerned with the church that is affected, which will also be taxed, and will not be able to use those funds to fulfill their mission of ministry and service to our community. We oppose the manner in which annexation appears to be skipping or jumping certain, certain areas. It's in no way fair to exclude individuals or certain areas from the proposed annexation. We're concerned with the administration and frankly, the legality of which, uh, this is taking place, as many of our neighbors which are clearly in the proposed zone according to the map have not received letters. So we question the validity of the list and the affected individuals and their rights to vote on the matter. Uh, as anyone who's been to our local big box store, we can attest that bigger is not always better. Nor, nor does it equate to fiscal responsibility. In summary, the majority of residents and business owners of Hager Hill strongly oppose this annexation. We respectfully request you to cease all attempts at annexation of the Hager Hill area. In the event that you do not honor this request, we have organized and are prepared to present a petition within the required timeframe after the second reading, and we fully intend to force the issue to vote. And thank you, and I apologize that we do have some very heated discussions. As you can see, there are a lot of people that are affected by this, um, and have some very strong feelings about this. So thank you for giving us an opportunity to address the city council and to express our views.
You give a first round.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you're welcome. Okay.
David made a motion to adjourn.
I'll say.
We have a motion, uh, to adjourn and second. Uh, but Tommy, you stand adjourned.